Others and with whom I come into contact. Help me to demonstrate your love not only through those who are lovable, but to all those who lash out at me through pain, anger, disappointment, or loss. May the love of Jesus be manifested in me and may the love of Jesus be distributed by grace through faith to all whom I come in contact and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you Christina and I'd ask everyone to stand and we're going to be singing a cappella tonight. Thank you everyone. Just a reminder that tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded. Item number 1.2, motions adopted in camera. We had a motion regarding property was adopted in camera and at this time there was no information received in camera. May I have an approval of the agenda please? Trustee Marai, trustee Quinn, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none, we will proceed to item 4, 4.1, the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Board for the 2017-2018 year. The election of the Chair of the Board for the period of December 5th, 2017 to the first Board meeting in 2018 of December. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, the nominees may appoint a scrutineer. Superintendent Nagoy and myself will be tabulating the ballots. According to our bylaws, a nomination motion for the position of Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Antumasi.
I'd like to nominate Diane Rebenda.
Do I have a second or please? Trustee Marai, thank you. Does trustee Rebenda accept the nomination for the position of Chair of the Board? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for the position of Chair? And for the third time, are there any other nominations for the position of Chair? Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a second to close the nominations for the position of Chair of the Board? Trustee Michael, trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. I now see that there were no further nominations and all in favor to nominate trustee Rebenda for the position of the Chair of the Board for the period of December 5th, 2017 to the first Board meeting in December 2018. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Carried. Trustee Rebenda, would you like to address the assembly?
Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you for this great privilege to serve as Chair of the Board for the next term. I'm most humbled by the confidence of my colleagues. I look forward to working with each of you over the next year as we continue our collective mission to defend and protect the interests of our students and to further the mission of Catholic education in Halton. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Rebenda. I would now need a motion. No, I don't, sorry. We're going to move to congratulations to trustee Rebenda. We will now move on to item 4.2, the election of the Vice Chair of the Board for the period of December 5th, 2017 to the first Board meeting in December of 2018. Should a vote by secret ballot become necessary this evening, the nominees may appoint a scrutineer and Superintendent Nagoy and myself will be tabulating the ballots. According to our bylaws, a nomination for the motion of Vice Chair of the Board must be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward. Trustee Rebenda.
Trustee Marai.
May I have a second or please? Trustee Antumasi. Does trustee Marai accept the nomination for the position of Vice Chair of the Board? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations to come forward for Vice Chair? And for the third and final time, are there any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a second to close the nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Trustee Michael, trustee Rowe, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now trustee Marai, you have been declared Vice Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board. All in favor? Who wish to nominate him for the position of Chair of the Board? Vice Chair, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Marai, trustee Marai, do you wish to address the meeting?
Very quickly. Just want to thank you and certainly thank Diane and Arlene for the nomination and seconding. And I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with each of you to push for positive change at this Board and to further its already great success.
Thank you. I will now gladly hand the meeting over to the current Chair, Mrs. Rebenda. Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much everyone for their support and patience. Now we'll move to item 5, Presentations, 5.1, Employee Assistance Program, EAP. Superintendent O'Hara, please.
As trustees are aware, the Board gave senior staff the mandate to go forward and look at modernizing our EAP program and to that end, we issued an RFP. Happy to report that Morno Chappelle was the organization that was successful in that undertaking and so staff has been working diligently at working towards implementing our new EAP program. So we have with you today Kim Lovridge and Colleen Penny, both from Morno Chappelle, and they're going to take you through our new EAP program at a high level for your information. So I'm going to pass you over.
Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you very much everyone for having us tonight. We're going to be providing a high level overview of the services that are going to be made available to the eligible employee and family members of the Board. We'll start with who we are first. Morno Chappelle has been delivering support programs for over 50 years. We're headquartered in Canada and we are now the largest employee and family assistance or EAP provider in the world. Out of our over 20,000 clients, we provide support services to almost 300 education sector clients. That includes 23 school boards in Ontario alone. Of those 23 school boards, nine of those school boards are Catholic boards. So firstly, at a high level, we'll look at what is the Morno Chappelle Employee Assistance Program or EAP. Four key points to understand that it's completely voluntary. Eligible employees are able to access the services and the supports that address all areas of work, health, and life at no cost to the employees or their immediate family members. The last key point that we'd like to make, it is completely confidential. Nobody will know that anybody has accessed the services unless the individual accessing them has told others about it. And hopefully they'll be spreading the good word after we've helped them resolve whatever barriers they have in their lives. The way we do that, the core of the program is in the core counseling. Currently, we have over 315 local counselors in and around the Halton region. Out of those counselors, 35, actually 37 now, are faith-based counselors. So your employees will be able to elect preferences for not only specializations, but for locations, as well as things like, I would like to see a counselor for instance that is at least 40 years old and I would prefer to see a female faith-based counselor. This counseling roster is supported by approximately 3,200 counselors Canada-wide for wherever those employees or their families may be working, going to school, or traveling. Now how are those services accessed? At that point, I'll turn it to my colleague, Colleen.
Thanks Kim. I'm one of the account executives that will be looking over the program, so happy to be here today, so thank you for that. Just to walk you through what it looks like when you call into our Care Access Center, one thing to note is that it is 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and you will be getting a live answer at any time. So that means that there is somebody always available to speak to you, including a clinician. So you will be assessed whether or not you need to speak to a clinician right away or you wish to speak to a clinician and you'll be immediately transferred if that is your preference. If it's not your preference, then our intake specialists are going to try to find out what it is that you're looking for and try to provide you with the best match. As Kim had mentioned, if it's a request for a specific type of counselor, maybe it's a location, or maybe it's a certain type of service, this is where we're able to best match the individual with the services that we offer. And 93% of our appointments that we're able to make are handled on that very first call. So we do, as Kim mentioned, have an extremely extensive network and through that very large network, we're able to immediately match individuals with the service they're looking for before they actually hang up that call. I'm just going to walk through a little bit about what it looks like when you call in because counseling has certainly evolved in the year 2018 now. There's eight different ways that people can connect with a counselor. So by far, our most popular ways on which people connect with a counselor is in-person counseling and telephone-based counseling. That's always people's preferred. However, recognizing that individuals' lives are extremely busy and the way in which people like to receive their information is certainly evolving. So on the screen is just a quick overview of some of the other modalities that we've invented and created to really best match people's needs with their busy lives. So there's First Chat, which is instant messaging with our counselors and getting an answer back within 60 seconds, video counseling, and e-counseling, as well as some other online programs as well. So really what we're trying to provide is more ways in which that we can ensure that the individuals that are looking for help get access to that help. This is just a quick overview of some of the services that we do offer. It's certainly not an exclusive, an extensive list of everything we offer, but certainly it's some of a good snapshot of some of the more key areas on which we are supporting individuals. It's broken down into two columns because it's really how our services are delivered. Those 75% of our services are clinically-based services and support. However, there's a lot of other areas that we're also able to help connect individuals and their family members with on what we call work-life services. Or a great way to think about them is those personal assistant type things that you need a little bit of assistance on to find information on some of the list of the information that's listed there as well. So again, it's not an exclusive list. What we do encourage people to do is if you're not sure if we handle the support or if we handle that service within the EAP, please call us and ask us the question. If we don't handle it within the EAP, part of our program is to absolutely give you advice and direct you on where you go next, whether it's community-based resources or other services and support. So in terms of accessing, just to want to give you a quick overview that there are multiple different ways that you can contact us. Not everybody has to call into our Care Access Center and speak to somebody live. We're starting to recognize that more and more people become very overwhelmed with that phone call. So now people can access all of our services online as well through our website, workhealthlife.com. You can book your services right from our website. We also are the first EAP provider to have a mobile app and it's called MyEAP. It's a free download from any of your mobile devices and basically it is having your digital wallet card or your EAP phone number on you at all times. Because as we know, not only do our younger demographics, but even our older demographics generally have their phone within arm's reach. So it's a way in which we want to ensure that individuals have access to help and support within arm's reach as well. So I just want to give you a quick overview as well, just in summary, so it was a very high-level overview of the EAP. We happily take a couple of questions if there's a few minutes, but we wanted to also just highlight that as part of the role of this program, we have been doing some communication. So just a quick little overview of the different groups that we have already presented to, including this evening's presentation. And there will be a webinar that's being presented to the administrators through a live webinar tomorrow morning, which I will be facilitating. And then also an email will be sent out to the staff to inform them about changes of the program and give them information about the new EAP program that will be commencing and that will be effective going live on January 1st.
Does anybody have any questions for us? We wanted to make sure that we left enough time for, to address anything that you may have.
Trustee Quinn, your hand is half up. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks very much for coming in today. Looking at the work-life services, legal, financial, naturopathic, nutrition, are those referral services or is Morno Chappelle offering these services as part of the EAP plan?
They're part of our EAP program. Absolutely.
So maybe a question to Joe then to follow up. Do these duplicate any services already offered with some of our unionized employee groups and their extended healthcare benefits?
Again, when you're talking about the employee life health trusts, many of those trusts have yet to be formed and so how those particular benefits are going to look like, we really don't know. With respect to ELECTA, ELECTA does have some funding in their plan as I understand for some counseling services and there's a cap on that. So what you see here is in fact, an expanded program which captures a lot of our wellness initiatives, which again, that funding envelope is drying up as trustees are aware. And so we're able to expand our EAP plan to capture both a traditional EAP plan and some of the things that we used to operate under our wellness program.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much to our presenter. That was excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
But we will move on to 5.2, Halton Catholic District School Board Library Services in Action. Superintendent Pocassen.
Thank you Madam Chair. Through you, last year we listened to during our policy discussions around libraries, I was struck by perhaps that we're not always talking how much we're doing in our library services and the great work that's going on with student learning in our libraries. And it tends to be that our librarians tend to be very humble and on the quieter side, although Scott doesn't always agree with me, but I think he's very humble about the fine work that he does. So this is very much a celebration and a sharing with you about the great work that does go on, that library services are very much here to stay. Books are very much here to stay in our libraries and we're very dedicated to our libraries as learning centers. So Scott Mallard's title is Administrator of Library Services, but he is our System Librarian. So welcome Scott.
Thank you.
Looking forward to your presentation.
And you will find in what I gave you, that's the long version. It's got great information in it because what it does is it links all the COGS together, the Learning Resource Center, the digital library, whatever you want to call it, the school library, all of those play together. And it's only because we all play together that we're actually able to make the impact for the students and that's truly what we're here for. I was, thank you Chairman, I guess you called Chair Rebenda. When she accepted, she mentioned right off the bat, the students within the Catholic framework. That's what we're all here for and that's truly what we're here for. So if you're following along, it makes no sense, you've got the long version, you're getting the short version tonight, but I welcome any questions. The library, okay, so the question might also ask is, everything's on Google. Why do we need school libraries? And there's been a big push for it and we've seen this happen in schools, we've seen this happen in universities. University Calgary said, hey, we don't need libraries. Well, within a year, they actually reintroduced the library and they actually had to go and purchase all the print books that they had thrown out again. We can go to Mohawk, we see the same thing at Mohawk where they have a very small central library because again, the intent was it was all digital and now it's crammed full of books. We can go to Sheridan, we can go to so many other people and it's actually good that we're kind of behind because we've been able to gain from them. The whole concept of school library is majorly supported by the curriculum. Ministry of Education and every curriculum document has a very detailed role of the school library. And as we move into the inquiry model, we get more and more push for the school library. No longer do we just say, Real was a hero or Real was a traitor. We sell, Real, traitor, and hero. You go ahead, you do the research and then you come back and you present it. And that's the environment that we're creating. Where do I go to be able to do the research, the investigation, the creativity, the collaboration, everything essential to it? You've got that place in your school. I also don't care what you call it. Call it a library, call it the room. What I'm concerned with is what happens within it. People get caught up, I had a wonderful discussion with the principal probably for a half hour on what should we call it? That's immaterial. What I want is what goes on within that room, whatever you want to call it. There's also been countless number of studies that have proven without a doubt that a well-stocked, professionally-run school library has a direct positive impact on student success. And we're not talking about one or two, we're talking about many of them. And they've been, I can go back to about 2000 right up to the current date and they all clearly indicate that the school library still has major impact. We also have to take into account that we have communities and we have schools where in effect, we are running as the public library because there is no public library nearby. Take Milton for example, where we have Lumen Christ, where we have St. Benedict, where we have Queen in Heaven, there is no public library accessible in that area. So we end up supporting that role too. Now what we are doing is we are shifting from a school library. Now one love that picture, you know, it's sterile, it's bright, it's not inviting, that's for sure. But we're moving from that type of cold environment to a school learning commons. And again, whatever you want to call it, I don't care. Pamela Harland is probably one of the most important people when it comes to this whole move towards a learning commons and she says her ultimate goal is a central and collaborative hub for instruction, research, learning, as well as a place to use innovative technologies and information resources. And that's what we're really going for. We want a place where you can go, where you can do the research, but when you've done the research, we can work as a group. We can actually then create something, be it a puppet show, and don't forget, you don't have to write an essay. You could do a puppet show, you could do interpret dance, you can do whatever for that assessment component. And that becomes that room and game, school library, learning commons, whatever you want to call it. It is also supported by the authority. Within their 21st century framework, we do have concept number four, the school library as a learning commons. And it is that shift towards, away from that sterile where children are seen but not heard to what I call an organized chaos, which is wonderfully noisy. You want to go to, you want to see one in action, go to Queen in Heaven any time of the day. It's noisy, it's vibrant, it's messy, it's chaotic, but wow, is it inspiring. Now at HCDSC, I can't remember how long ago we started to move towards the 21st century. It seems like, sorry, we'd be doing it forever. But all schools are somewhere on this move. Some of them are taking more cautiously, some of them have jumped way on the far end, some of them are far beyond where we are. Some of them actually are models without even knowing it. St. Patrick, I ran into the principal today, she goes, you know, no, we're not ready to go to a learning commons. And I said to her, but you think, everyone can come into the library, yeah? And that's where the staff meet to do, to do collaboration, yeah? And the kids can check out books, yeah? They're there, right? They don't have the fancy stuff, they don't have the maker spaces, they don't have the neat and nifty tables, but the fact is, it's working. So here's a school who thought, she was embarrassed, like she kind of hid herself, she was embarrassed that she wasn't there, but in fact, I would consider them as one of the most schools that we're going for. So everyone is shifting. Now we are shifting to, from that traditional, what I call it the gatekeeper. So I'm the gatekeeper of the information. When you come in, I give you the box with the answer. Here you go, this is the answer. To, hey, good question, let's go out, let's do some research, let's look at print book, let's look at the digital, let's look at the digital videos we have, let's look at all of these, you go ahead, and primary sources too, you go ahead, you develop, and now you draw your own conclusions. So nobody is telling you the answer, you've got to develop the answer. It is about access and access is to the resources when needed. I'm very proud of the fact that when, one of our vendors, Gail, I get a chart every month saying who was online. Every single hour of the day, every day of the week, someone is online. Yes. Monday morning, 2:00 in the morning, someone is online. Friday, Saturday, it doesn't matter where, but someone is online. And we continue, last year we had, we finally hit over a million hits in one year. And we're a smaller board, but the fact is, we are using our products and they are 24/7. Collaboration, where can I go to work if I'm doing a project? If I want to work with a teacher, if I want to work with a colleague, where can I go? You can go to that room. That's what we're looking at. Creativity, that's maker space, but it's also creating something. When you've done your research, you have to do something with it. When I was doing my thesis in French, I would clean my toilet rather than actually write it, but something needed to be done and that's what you can do here. It's experimental, it's engaging. We want a welcoming environment, we want people to want to come in, but it's also experimental and we can keep changing. One of the key things is, a learning commons never ends. If you reach a stage where you say, hey, we're finished, that's not a learning commons. You've got to change constantly to reflect the changing community. It is student-centered. That's what we're here for. And my key question is, whatever you are doing, and it doesn't matter what it is, how does that aid student success? And if it doesn't aid student success, why are you doing it? And shouldn't we change it so it does? Every single thing you do, you start signing a book, two book limit, how is that helping the student? You can only take one fiction, you can only take one nonfiction, how is that helping the student? So every single thing we do has to reflect and aid the students and that's what we're here for. It is also school-specific. What works in one school may not work in another school. It's based on the SIP. What are the needs of that school? That's where we get the identity, that's where we get that basic information about what is needed for the school and from that, we develop the learning commons. And that's why it changes because the SIP changes too. Again, you would never have a constant SIP. It's going to change continually to reflect the needs, the community we in the library have got to change to. Now, there are some key concepts. Physical space must be flexible, you must be able to move, it must be diverse, it must be available and welcoming. Now we get into the nice part, the pictures. Here for example is St. Christopher. Look at the students, you have students standing, you have students at a seat, you have students working in computers at the back, you can't really see it that well, but you also have students sitting on the floor working. Those units, the shelving units, and there's a better picture later on, actually are on wheels. So we need a larger space to meet. We can actually move those away. We can actually move those away, put the chairs together, put the tables together, and we can create an instant learning place where we can actually work as a group to whatever it is we need to do. Something as simple as that. So, we have some comfy chairs, we have a beanbag, we even have a kickstand, but we're giving students a variety of seating. These, this is nothing major, this was quite cheap to do, but the fact is, you can, it's a variety. And they're portable, so I can drag it over. Um, one of the schools purchased little pa- pads. Students can then take the pads, throw them on the floor, and we now created our unique learning space. It's as simple as that. Uh, this is the one from St. Christopher's. And down on the bottom, you can actually see wheels on the unit. They're lockable, so the kids don't push them. They also go in, so it's healthy and safe and nobody's going to trip us over the wheels, but they can be moved. So, in a school, you want to have a large meeting, you can actually move these out of the way and have that large meeting if you so wish. Look at the students too, look at the chairs, we have tables, we have chairs. St. Matthew's, I love this. It looks like a traditional library, but the fact is, with respect, they've moved the tables out of the way and they're doing pumpkins and carving. Why not? And you know what? They're using books, they've gone to look for patterns from the books. What's a bat look like? I don't know, let's go look on the shelf. They've got books there, they're actually using the collection. So, again, as simple as carving pumpkins, but you will also notice the respect. They've carefully moved the stuff out of the way. They've got a, uh, drop cloth down. Everything is done completely with respect. And, without even asking, this doesn't show it here, but the students move the tables back when they finish them. Wow. Queen of Heaven, look at, you know, it's, I love the kid in the blue where he's kind of squished down, um, in the blue chair, he's squished down. Look at all the variety. Bec- we don't learn the same way, we don't read the same way, we don't relax the same way. So, we want to give a variety of doing it. And if you want to go on the floor, go on the floor, as long as it's safe, i.e. you're not in the way of a fire escape or something like that, why not? So, this is the type of environment we're creating. We also have virtual space, we have to take that into account. It's just not that room. It is much larger. They're available, they're reliable, they're centralized. One of my keys is, I will only purchase digital products if they're available to every single student. I don't want it just to be for one particular school. That's not how my mentality works. It has to be available for everyone. They're differentiated, so you have a wide variety. So many of our products, you can actually read at above reading level, at regular reading level, or below reading level. You have that ability to be able to go in to do it. And they're current. Um, in many cases, we've now got material that is, actually, I came across one, uh, today, which is April 2018. That's how current they are. What else I've taken into account, when I bring in my device, if we're promoting it, um, you don't want to have to be a Cirque du Soleil contortionist just to be able to plug in your computer. As simple as that. They've just run the outlets on the top. Wow. That's a simple thing, but you know what, it works. We also have schools where they just drop them down from the ceiling, the, the cords down from the ceiling, where again, I can plug my device in. But if I'm going to do research and my battery is running low, here's an option. We have, we've created websites. When there wasn't something that could help us, we've created this. This is an Indigenous people website that we've created. And we as a group, and I encourage teachers, uh, consultants, Sherri Saville, they keep sending me links and I keep going in and adding them. There was nothing available, so we created it. Massive amount of digital products. We have over eighty-one digital products and I actually just purchased another one today on world languages. So, it's, it's thirty bucks, but they're now available in six different languages to acknowledge that our student population is changing. Um, it's massive and they all are available 24/7. And another thing that I guarantee is you can invite, you can get them from home too. I love this. This is not your package just to came in today. Their learning goal, the grade twos can independently log in, open a webpage, find Pedago, and find research facts about landforms and climate in the United States. And they did it. Look at their face, they're happy. That is the type of environment that we want to be able to create. That's grade two students. I see kindergarten kids go in, actually, it's amazing. Give a computer to a kindergarten kid, what they can do. You can't do your cellphone, give it to a kindergarten kid, they'll do it for you. And then they'll say, push this button, push this button, that's all you need to know. It's phenomenal. But that, that for me was, actually, that's inspiring. Um, they've done it. And look at the face, they're so happy. Pedagogy, we have to take into account change in the curriculum, more towards that inquiry model, again, back to Riel. I'm not going to tell you Riel is a hero or Riel was a traitor. I'm going to say, hey, what was he? You go out and do the research. So, it's inquiry model, it's higher order thinking, so you have primary documents. You've got to develop your own concept from those primary documents. So, we have Britannica Online Primary Documents to supply that. It's experimenting, it's engaging. Again, I want you to actually want to come in. It's a move from what we call the gatekeeper, gatekeeper model, which is back to that, I give you the box with all the answers. Or you come in and you know that when you're doing research on World War II, you go to the truck that someone pulled to me. Try doing that in university. Go up to the library in a university and say, where's the truck you pulled from World War II? They're not going to do it. So, how is that helping our students for when they move on after they graduate? All we've done is taught them, someone else is going to do all the research for me and I just simply have to go to the truck and pull it. So, I really push showing students how to search. Here's, look at this. They were doing a project, the kids are all working together, and this they just did themselves. One kid actually did not understand what was going on. Yes, of course, you could ask the teacher. This was a really good teacher. They started asking colleagues. All of them together are trying to solve the issue. Instead of immediately going to the teacher, they're trying to solve it themselves. Look at, sometimes the answer is a book. It's not all digital. You go for the best tool. Sometimes the, the best tool is a book. Sometimes if you're, if you're trying to do something, the best tool is actually a pencil, for example, pencil and paper. You go for the best tool possible. All of these show that type of collaboration that we have going on in our schools now. You can sit at a table, you can talk, you can lean over the table as they are, that's completely fine. You can sit on the floor. The one in the corner there, where they've got a computer going and they've got a chart paper, and they're working together to create something. But that's fine. Again, this for me is wow. Um, St. Marguerite, they've gone from a very traditional to a wild, organized, well, wonderful environment. So, they have kids using the computers, they have sessions going on in there. They have, uh, they had a coding workshop just recently when I was in there. So, they had coding workshop on this side, they had some kids doing Lego on this corner, they had kids reading in here, they had two teachers working over there, plus they had someone else playing with the green screen. And they're waiting for the Lego wall to come up. Yeah? Just the kids want to come. We are, I, I want to reach a stage where I actually have to turn kids away because the fire marshal says, there's so many in here. That's my ultimate goal. Uh, we do acknowledge maker space. So, you do have Stickbot, for example, so you can do green screen, little stickman. And give a computer, uh, iPad. It's a free, uh, app, you download and you move them and you create a movie. Or we have Sparrows, which are little computers, which again, you can actually get them to roll around, uh, you can put little, um, pens and all that on the bottom of them so they can do lines. Kids do our, it's phenomenal. And again, this was a library tech who has no computer knowledge and she took the chance and said, I'm going to let the kids play. I don't know anything about it, you teach me. And they did. They know. Um, environment, it is learner-centered. Again, we're here for students. I'm not creating the library learning commons for me, I'm creating it for the students. It is learning-centered. It's not a sterile environment. You want to bring your class in to learn? Of course, absolutely. It's collaborative, we all work together. I worked with the teacher on showing how to do a bibliography, citation properly. Copyright Act says everyone has to do a citation. You have to do a citation, that's a legal requirement now. How do I do it? Hey, why don't I go to the library tech, find out how to do it, and then we can all work together on getting it going. It is personalized, everything is done. Again, there is no cookie cutter for it. And where there is support. I love this one. They read a story, um, Remembrance Day about copies. And with no prompting at all, the students then went over to the whiteboard with dry erase markers and started drawing off on their own. But again, look at their faces, they're actually happy, they're engaged, and they've heard the story, now they're interpreting it. Uh, sometimes it, it's a puppet. So, again, we look at different things. Again, you go for what is needed instead of me telling the U, this is what you need. So, in this case, they were actually going to do, they write fairy tales and they're going to be storytelling. Puppets are perfect. So, I can put the puppet on and I can retell the story or the what next, what happened after Goldilocks or whatever, right? That type of thing. Um, look at this. I love this too. You've got a massive group in there, but I don't know if you can actually notice in the far corner, there's someone doing research. It is possible. It's not one class at a time. This is a massive class, it's actually, I think it's two classes actually, and there's still someone in there doing research. And at the far table, I think you can just make them out, there's actually a couple of teachers working on, uh, planning. I'm not even sure, I don't care what they're doing, the fact is, they're in there, they're working, we can all work together. Um, we have to acknowledge everyone's learner. Uh, it doesn't matter to me, I say to our custodian, you want to borrow a book? Of course. And I've been pushing library staff, I used to get staff listing, i.e. teachers only. And then I say, well, what about custodians? What about the office staff? What about, what about, what about? I truly believe everyone is a learner and that's what we need to direct it to. Um, learning is personalized, differentiated, and motivating. I sure hope it's motivating. And I want to create that environment where you actually want to go. Instead of, oh crap, it's Monday and we have library period. And I have to face that dragon. That's not what I want. I want, hey, it's Monday, we have library. Queen of Heaven, as I said, you want to go see one in action. Variety of tables. And they fit together like puzzles. Variety of seating. Look at the lighting. It's phenomenal. You walk in there and the noise level hits you and then you start listening at constructive noise. It's people working together. It's two students doing immediate book report. Trucks, have you read this book over here? This is just for you. It's that kind of constructive noise that we actually have that we want to encourage. And this is just one of them, there's a lot, there's so many others which are available. This one just happens to be ex- really pushing the experimental aspect of it. And she's purposely looking at different types of chairs to see which ones work. And some don't, that's fine. We make mistakes, mistakes are natural, so then we take them out. Now, um, it is a multi-year plan, it's not going to be, hey, we leave Friday and we're learning commons Monday. Um, it is multi-year and that's what we should be planning. Uh, it never finishes. And my key word is, everything you do, so even when you're purchasing furniture, how is that helping the students? And if it's not, why are you purchasing that furniture? Why that one? Uh, it will change, it has to change. I do have a website, actually, which anyone can access, set up for a learning commons. I have many pictures of our school board, plus others, so you can see what else is happening out there. Um, the paradigm shift, massive amount, maker space, a whole pile of stuff there. I encourage everyone to go there. Um, I do acknowledge that I probably am over my time limit. Um, I don't know if time allows for questions, but I'm always available. Um, even that long part, you have questions, you just contact me. Um, all of you are invited to come to see what we have. Sometimes you actually have to see it. Our, I could say our dead animal kit means nothing to you, but when you see it, it's the preserved animals. And we still have teachers saying, I can't remember what it's called. Oh, it's the dead animals. Great, yeah, we'll get it for you. Right? Um, but that's the type of stuff we have at the Resource Centre, plus all the digital products, all the background to support the students. That was the whirlwind tour. I could take the next hour and talk the longer tour, but I won't. Okay?
Thank you very much, Scott. That was very informative and enjoyable. Uh, any questions, trustees? Trustee Carabala?
Thank you very much. That was really great. I'm wondering, when you have a new school that opens up, how do you go about filling the library? Do you have a, a core amount of books that you purchase right away? And does each library in different regions, as the years go on, purchase? How do you choose your books?
It ultimately comes down to the principal. The principal is responsible for the purchasing. What we have is, um, there is a vendor who actually has produced a core list. We still need to be able to look at it. Um, say, for example, um, we know that there's not going to be a grid, or a lot of grade seven eights. There's no sense of us at that time taking our limited budget and buying a whole suite of products for the grade seven eights. So, we'll concentrate on the primary. Um, the other thing that I absolutely love is other schools getting rid, discarding their good quality, um, extras. I bought three copies, they don't go anymore, I can give one away. It's phenomenal. It may not be the best, but at least it's a starting point, so I can take my limited budget and extend it. Uh, we avoid, um, when I do interviews, I say to people, my collection policy is, we purchase material to support the Ontario experiment within the Catholic framework, period. I come from the Toronto Reference Library and Toronto Public Library, which we probably had like sixty-page document on collection policy. I refuse that because we need to meet that environment. St. Benedict and Queen of Heaven are ten-minute drive apart, fifteen minutes. Their collections were completely different because you need to respect and re- honor the school community. Maybe I'm avoiding your question, but there, it, it's, it's, it's not an easy answer. Much like the same as the learning commons, there is no cookie cutter. Um, you really do need to respond to the community. And you will have, as I said, St. Benedict, Queen of Heaven, they tried buying together, it just didn't work out because you need to respond to the school, the individual community.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you very much. Your enthusiasm is, uh, infectious, I think. So, thanks very much. So, you have all the, uh, the gatekeepers for the budget around the table here. Could you tell us if there's anything that you would, uh, have on your wish list for us to consider in our next go-around? Please?
We need better computers in the library. Uh, we have several schools which I cannot show a student how to use a database simply because I do not have a computer in the library or a functioning one in the library. Um, we also have a massive amount of digital products. I, uh, do massive negotiations with vendors. I have no hesitation on saying to a vendor, hey, can you offer to me with a thirty percent discount? Um, but still, there's so many out there that we should have. And I'm always amazed when we do get ones, McLean's Archives, so we now have McLean's right back to nineteen oh five, primary documents, World War I, World War II, Canadian. Um, phenomenal. And once people see it, they go, wow, but that was a big part of my budget. So just keeping that in mind too, that there is so much out there, that we still have not been able to purchase, simply because of that. My budget is adequate, uh, it's good. Um, I belong to an organization of library coordinators for Ontario, and we're actually very well-supported. Curriculum has always supported the libraries. Um, but of course, there's always other things that could be purchased. I always welcome any questions. Um, I'm rarely in my office, so there's no sense, um, phoning.
Scott, are your offices still up at Notre Dame?
For me?
Are your offices still up at Notre Dame? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, thank you, Scott, it was very informative and enjoyable, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to, where am I? Approval of the minutes, number seven point one, please, the minutes of November twenty-first, regular board meeting, can I have a mover? Trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by trustee Rowe. Any questions? All, all in favor, please? Thank you. Uh, business arising from previous meetings, page sixty-five, any questions? All right, we're moving into action items, so nine point one, policy one dash twenty-two, admission to schools elementary and secondary, trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabenda, I'd like to move item nine point one, which is resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee, and approve policy dash, I dash twenty-two, admission to schools elementary and secondary as amended.
Thank you, can I have a second, please? Uh, Vice Chair Murray, thank you. Okay, any questions to that? No, okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. And nine point two, policy one dash four four, strategic planning process, trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabenda, I'd like to move policy I dash forty-four, strategic planning. Recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy I dash four forty-four, strategic planning process at second reading.
Thank you, do we have a second, trustee Ian Tomasi, any questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, nine point three, policy two dash zero six, lunch supervision, trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabenda, I've moved that, rescind policy I dash zero six, lunch supervision.
Thank you, a second, please? Trustee Rowe? Any questions? No, all in favor? Thank you very much. Over the page, nine point four, policy two dash twenty-one, cross-panel sharing of student information, trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabenda, I'd like to move policy I da- two dash twenty-one. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board rescind this policy, cross-panel sharing of student information.
Thank you, a second, please? Trustee Tritz, thank you, any questions? All in favor? Uh, policy, uh, sorry, nine point five, policy three dash zero three, teacher performance appraisal, trustee Danko.
Thank you Chair Rabenda, I'd like to move policy, uh, three dash zero three, teacher performance approval, move that the recommendation of the Policy Committee, uh, approve this policy as amended.
Thank you, a second, please? Trustee Rowe? Any questions? All in favor? Thank you very. Uh, number ten, uh, thank you trustee Danko for all of that. Uh, number ten, staff reports, ten point one, Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School, School Boundary Review Committee interim report and recommendations, Superintendent Cipriano.
Uh, thank you Madam Chair. And through you, I present this, uh, report regarding the Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review Committee interim report and recommendation. As part of this report, you have before you the list of project milestones and dates, and those that have been met, and those that are remain outstanding. Uh, just a reminder, the Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review seeks to establish school boundaries for the new Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School, prior to its opening, uh, in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. This school, uh, will be the first of an anticipated, uh, four new elementary schools set to open in the Milton-Boyn Secondary Plan over the next ten years. Given the anticipated future boundary reviews of these additional three schools, and of course, in accordance with our own administrative policy of VI eighty-eight, staff also sought to designate, to designate study areas as holding development areas for future elementary schools in South Milton, as part of this entire school boundary review process. This was done with the intent to attempt, uh, this was done with the intent to attempt to mitigate the number of multiple moves that children would experience with these new schools, as well, and probably more importantly, to serve notice to the communities and their families and their parents, well in advance, that students residing in these holding areas may be directed to new schools in the future, following the school boundary review processes. The School Boundary Review Committee met on October twenty-third, and then again on, on November the thirteenth, prior to our Community Information Night. At the Community Information Night, staff presented the boundary review process, the proposed school boundaries, which is outlined as option one in your appendix, and the proposed holding development areas for the future elementary schools. There was an opportunity for questions and answers at the end of the meeting, as well as attendees were provided instructions on how to submit feedback, and of course, delegate to the board. An online survey was communicated to the affected communities, and was open for feedback for just under two weeks. You will find a summary report of the feedback organized by themes in appendix C of the, of the report. Uh, most of the feedback, thankfully, and, and positively, was supportive of the recommendation, and, or, and/or had no concerns or suggestions. However, there was comments expressing some concerns about the multiple movement of rural students that are presently at St. Benedict School. With the proposed option one, these rural students would experience a total of three moves, uh, since they were initially moved from Our Lady of Victory. When staff looked at these students and their potential moves, uh, and considering that there was just a few students, a minimal impact on St. Benedict community, uh, and their population, it's less than ten students that this would affect, staff developed option two, which you will also find in your report, which keeps the rural patches of St. Benedict until such time Milton number eight Catholic Elementary School will be opened. So after careful consideration, including review of the stakeholder input from the community consultation evening and online submissions of input, the School Boundary Review Committee came to the unanimous decision to recommend the following option. Option two be pursued as the preferred boundaries for Milton number eight. That all grade seven students enrolled this school year, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, be offered the option to be grandfathered to remain at their home school, St. Benedict, uh, until they graduate to the secondary panel without transportation. And that holding areas be designated in principle for Milton number nine, Milton number ten, and Milton number eleven Catholic Elementary Schools, to notify the community that they may be subject to future school boundary reviews for these schools. Board staff have reviewed these recommendations of the Boundary Review Committee, and agrees with the Advisory Committee's recommendations. The next steps in the process is for the board to receive and consider delegations from the community at the December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting, and receive an action item from senior staff, and decide upon approving these recommendations at the January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular meeting of the board. I would like to publicly thank the parents that are listed in your report, that sat on our committee, two from St. Benedict and two from St. Peter, as well as the entire school communities that came out for the Community Information Night, and those that participated online in their feedback. Myself, uh, or any member of senior staff and staff that participated in this process would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, trustees? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you Camilla. Looking at, uh, the resolution itself, the students currently attending grade seven at St. Benedict Catholic Elementary School in twenty seventeen eighteen, be provided the option to be grandfathered without transportation. What were the potential costs if we were to have continued to pay for transportation for those outside of the, uh, the walking distance?
Uh, through you Madam Chair, thank you, uh, trustee Quinn. Uh, I, I don't have the cost in front of me, I do know that, uh, historically, we have, uh, this has been a past practice of any new school in, in all of our communities, to offer tran- uh, sorry, to offer, uh, graring of students, of grade seven students, till they finish their school year, or their graduation of grade eight. Uh, and once again, typically, uh, uh, and I, and I can only speak from my own experiences for the last five years, we've never offered transportation, uh, to the best of my knowledge. Uh, Fred, can you respond about the cost? Do we have a ballpark on the cost of offering those students transportation?
Uh, through you Madam Chair, the cost for transportation, uh, would probably be around for a, a larger bus. Um, seeing that they are, uh, senior students, would probably run about fifty thousand dollars for the, the one year of operations. So depending on how much route sharing you could do, that's usually the base cost for a bus. Um, so there's, it, it's hard to say without doing the full plan.
Sorry, Fred, how much did you say, I missed it? Fifty thousand?
It's usually fifty thousand for a bus. And afterwards, depending on what kind of savings you can get in route sharing, but.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear it. Go ahead trustee Quinn.
And as a follow-up then, would that be mitigated by potentially transporting these students to the new school? Because they, they might be getting bused anyways? So is, is it an additional fifty thousand, or could it be less based on, on the, the distance they have to travel?
Through you Madam Chair, uh, what I would say, it would be a, probably a duplicate of the cost, because of the fact that you're adding another route to, uh, the entire thing. So depending on what the timing is, you, you're, you're adding another loop to the whole system, so it, more than likely, you will be incurring additional costs.
Uh, thank you, any other questions? No? All right. Uh, so, uh, thank you very much Superintendent Cipriano. Uh, ten point two, proposed two thousand and eighteen kindergarten outdoor learning place, place-based projects, Superintendent Merrick, please.
Uh, so, uh, this is our, uh, third installment now of the, uh, natural kindergarten play spaces. Um, we've already completed twenty-nine of the, uh, uh, natural play spaces at elementary schools across the board, uh, in the previous summers. Um, so this proposal is for eleven, uh, for other schools, um, which will actually complete all of these schools, except for those which are involved in consolidation projects, uh, or, uh, pending funding from the ministry for a full rebuild under the capital priorities submissions. Um, we follow the same process on this project, uh, uh, to date, uh, as in previous years, taking a collaborative approach, uh, with teaching staff, uh, to de- design a solution that's unique for each school, and some of those, uh, renderings you can see in your, in your report package in front of you tonight. Um, we are about ninety percent complete with the, uh, with some of the designs, um, and the budget costs, the preliminary budget costs are known for the projects now. Um, and, uh, we did a lot of work on these projects, especially to ensure, uh, they're, they're accessible and safe, and comply with all local standards and, and regulations. Uh, so the projected cost, uh, for the project, current for the eleven, uh, playgrounds, is, uh, approximately two million dollars, and will be funded through the facilities capital reserve, uh, and the resolutions, um, are shown in front of you in the, in the report, as will be presented at the next board meeting. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you Ryan, any questions? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you, through you Madam Chair, what were the learnings from the designs of the, the ones that have been built over the last two, two, three years? What, what have we found to be the best designs, and are any that, uh, that's not met the, uh, you know, favorite, favorites of the, uh, staff or students?
So, uh, uh, through you Madam Chair, uh, Steve Allam of our, uh, on our project team would be able to answer that in much more detail than myself, but a couple that I can think of that come to mind, um, especially around sandbox areas, um, where kids tend to, the sand tends to migrate out of the sandbox into the areas around it. Um, especially when we have chain-linked fences beside it, uh, they tend to end up on the other side of the fence. And I hear about it, especially from our custodians who have to end up shoveling that sand back into the sandbox. Uh, we've been adding mirrors and chalkboards across the, uh, across the edges of it, to keep the, uh, the sand in the, in the sandbox areas. Um, as well as, uh, some of the playgrounds that have, uh, uh, some of the climbing, uh, gyms around it. Um, ensuring that we have a, a very deep base of, uh, of, uh, engineered wood fiber, uh, which is the wood mulch that you see in there. Um, even though we do have a fairly good base there now, it does get compacted over time, and we've been digging out some of those and re-introducing a deeper base on those. Uh, and then finally, uh, working with some of the members on CAC, um, and introducing more accessible features into the, into the playgrounds. I know we have, uh, sand tables, um, that are wheelchair accessible now, at a, at a reasonable height, so, um, those are three of the things I can think of. And Steve could probably talk all night on it, but, uh, that's, uh.
Vice Chair Murray?
Uh, I, I have a kind of a question on, uh, costs, and I, I tried to look back in our, you know, last two iterations that we went through. Um, are, are we seeing decreases, or are we able to see decreases in professional fees? And is the contingent, contingency, uh, also being lowered by the fact that we have more experience with these projects? And overall, do you find that the cost per school is going up, staying the same, or going down?
Through you Madam Chair, uh, I guess a couple of components there, the, the, uh, the professional fees have been fairly static. I would say we made out very well in the first year, especially with it being a very new concept. Um, there was a lot of challenges, uh, that weren't foreseen by our consultants in the first year. Um, and we made out very well, and then, uh, since then, they, they've held the costing on it for us, which is fantastic, uh, and we've been, got better at the process. Um, so I think it's a little more equitable for everybody now. Uh, however, with the, uh, um, it's kind of like the overall project cost, um, especially if the, you look at the list of schools we have, uh, on the, on the docket for this year, there tend to be some older schools that need significant infrastructure upgrades. Um, so where in previous years, we may have been able to, uh, utilize part of the asphalt areas, or, uh, or the walkways, the paths around it. Um, these schools are substantially older and need a lot more infrastructure upgrades, so the, the overall project costs have gone up a little bit this year. Uh, just because we know we have to kind of start from scratch, and, uh, we'll have a lot more paving, and, and the paving around the area, the fencing around the area, all needs to be replaced. So we, um, at a little bit of a disadvantage on those, so.
Thank you trustee Caraballa.
Thank you, through you Madam Chair, when we started this project, do I remember well that it was funded with a ministry grant? So is that all used up, and then this is our, this is coming out of our budget?
Through you Madam Chair, uh, we do still have some, uh, of the full day kindergarten funding available, um, so we tend to utilize that first, uh, and then we'll get into using our school renewal grants and other, uh, capital sources, still ministry-funded, um, through our capital programs, um, but through different sources of funding, so. And, and I'll add as well that the, uh, the costs that you see in front of you are, it's a projected cost based on our past projects and experience. Um, they are not tendered prices yet, so we haven't tendered this, uh, to the public, so, um, we do have contingencies built into it, and expect that, you know, as the prices come in, um, we'll have enough in the budget, and it's just come in under budget, so.
Thank you, any other questions? No? All right, thank you very much Ryan. Uh, ten point three, Oakville South Central Catholic Elementary School Sketch Plan Design, Superintendent Merrick?
Sorry, with capital planning for the project, um, the RFP process was completed in October, uh, and Snyder Architects was the successful, uh, architect for the project. Um, and then presented tonight in the report, you have the preliminary budget, uh, which falls in line with the funding that was approved, uh, for the project back in, uh, by the Board of Trustees in September of two thousand and seventeen. And we have the concept, uh, early concept designs, uh, for the school. Uh, so we'll start with the budget. Um, we presented this back in September as well, as a, as kind of an early cut of the budget. Um, but we have, uh, maintained our, our construction and demolition budget at about nine point seven five, nine point seven five million, uh, on the total budget of just over eleven point four million. And then you see where the professional fees fall in line now, now that we have an architect selected, we know the, the exact cut of the, uh, of the professional fees, and then all your kind of contingencies, and permit fees, inspections and testing, and furniture and equipment fall in line as well. Um, noted that outside of the, uh, of the budget, the capital budget for the project, we have the bridge financing, um, for the, for the capital costs, uh, which is GSN funded through a different source. Moving into the, the sketch plan design, uh, so for the site plan for the project, um, we try to keep the orientation and, and layout of the site similar to the existing school. Um, so, you know, what's a, it's a established neighborhood and, um, well-built up in the area, uh, so, uh, keeping the similar orientation of the school, uh, so as to not, uh, interrupt or disturb the, uh, the neighbors in the area. Uh, maintaining the bus loop in the front, um, we've actually extended it quite a bit, so the, uh, the bus loop, for anyone who's been to St. Joseph's, knows the bus loop in the front of that school is very, very small, uh, and with the added, uh, number of students coming over from, uh, from St. James, um, we know that we will need a significantly larger bus loop there, so we've extended that substantially. Uh, now, we also need more parking with the added, uh, capacity of the school, um, so extended parking on both sides, uh, but as well maintaining the, uh, uh, the connectivity to the pathway, um, which is at the bottom here. Um, to the, on the south property line, uh, we have a pathway that connects into a court, uh, so maintaining that, uh, that pathway, um, to the south.
The pathway coming through, they have to cross through the parking lot to get to the school, or is there a path?
The path will go around the, into, into the yard as well, so.
If they go into the yard, but not to the front door of the school? Or to the entrance of the school?
You can get onto here, and then you can come down the pathway here as well, so.
Trustee, did you have a question? Did you, I thought you had, was up, you didn't have a question, okay. Questions Ryan?
Moving to the first floor of the project, um, we kept, uh, a similar shape to the existing school, uh, so an L-shaped. Um, it is kind of a, a, a challenging site where we have a narrow frontage, it is a large five-point It is a large five-point-five acre site, but it is a narrow frontage site. So, keeping with a very efficient L-shaped double loaded corridor design, which minimizes our corridor space and affords us with some of the amenities that we see in larger, six-hundred-seventy-one people play schools that we typically build our new schools to. So, the gym is the same size as we build in our larger schools. The learning commons are the same size that we build in our larger schools. So, keeping some of those larger amenities in a smaller total footprint school. And the FDK rooms located along the inside of the L here and facing southeast. So, when they're immediately outside of those rooms will be the FDK play area, which will be southeast facing to get the morning sun and keep it warm and then cool in the afternoon to, it'll be in the shade in the afternoon. And we have the full spec ed suite on the first floor, which we rolled out in our St. Gregory grade school. And we've had good success with that one. Moving to the second floor. We have the specialty rooms at the end of the corridor. So, the art room, music room, and the science room, those are large classrooms there. We have some resource rooms on the second floor, three resource rooms, as well as the mechanical penthouse on the second floor and a lot of more traditional classrooms. So, the total design right now, we're a little bit over fifty-six thousand square feet, which is within our ministry benchmark. And we're working through the design details with our consultants, as well as the town, to seek building permits, approvals, and design approvals. And you have the resolutions perceived as the design as presented in front of you in the report.
Thank you. Trustee Ro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I was just wondering if there's no washroom facilities at the gym itself when the kids go into, for gym class?
There will be in the change rooms. They're not shown on this simple, actually, they are shown on this drawing as well. So, they're added into the change rooms there.
How many square feet does a staff room take up? And how many staff would be in a school like this per square foot? I always, they always seem tiny to me, staff rooms. So, I'm wondering, are they getting bigger these days with our new designs, or no?
They're typically around the same size as the classroom. However, when you add in the kitchen set in there and a large table, it tends to feel a lot smaller than a typical classroom, so. And it's bigger furniture as opposed to small furniture in the classrooms, so. I can only speak to my experiences I've been here. It's been a fairly standard size. And especially this school is a little bit smaller than some of the previous ones we've built in the past. So, it's, it's at a classroom size, so.
And Trustee Caravella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Would the chapel be there, like with the, pairing up with the learning commons? Or is there an area for chapel?
We typically don't design chapels into our elementary school designs, only at secondary schools.
I think I've seen it, though. No, maybe St. John's? St. Anne's? Okay. Well, I noticed on here there's a safe room. So, it made me think that there could be a chapel or an area if that's thought of. What's the safe room? Can you describe the safe room?
So, the safe, through the chair, the safe room is part of the spec ed suite. And we kind of came up with that standard design that we've been using over the last few years. Safe room is a room that's in schools and it's part of spec ed programming.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up on Trustee Caravella's question. Sometimes there are open spaces, and this is what happens in the elementary schools that are conducive. Maybe they're not a full room or a resource room, and they turn them into an area where students can come and pray or a quiet area like a corner in an end of a hallway or in a common space. And I see a couple of places on either the first floor or the second floor where that would be conducive. And I think the principal and the staff and the students and the parents would say this seems like a good spot. But normally, that, they pretty much figure out where it would be when they move in.
Thank you very much. Were there any other questions, Ryan? No? All right. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Ten point four, 2017, 2018 revised budget estimates draft. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And bear with my voice. We're presenting trustees with a draft revised budget for the year. And we wanted to bring this ahead of schedule. Typically, we have done this at the second board meeting in December because of the very tight timelines between year end and revised. But we have worked very hard to try to get a draft together for trustees. We're still working on just going overall over the revenue allocations and expenses and the enveloping. But the things are in our system and we're pleased to provide trustees with a draft revised budget. Since the original budget estimates, our enrollment has increased by 285 pupils, average daily enrollment. And over last year, we have increased by 987. So, we are definitely a growing board. We continue to grow. Revenues have increased by 8.8 million over the budget. A big chunk of that is EDC revenue. So, that is, it's out of compliance. So, 3.5 million is an increase in the EDC education development charges revenue. And as we look back at 2016, 17, we have collected significantly more levies than we have budgeted. These are very difficult to budget for. They are pretty much based on permits and development. 3.2 million of the additional revenue is in additional GSN from growth. About 685,000 is from other provincial grants. And the balance is increase in international student fees and rental from the use of our facilities. Of course, expenses have also increased by about 5.7 million over budget, mostly to address growth. So, we have about 4.4 million increase in salary and benefits and about 1.3, 1.4 million in other expenses. I wanted to draw your attention to page 145 of your package. The table outlines the staffing enhancements that we have added over the budget. The elementary and secondary teachers, early childhood educators, 1.5 vice principals. There is some special education staff, as well as a health and safety WSIB claims officer and an attendance support officer. Most of these are offset by increases in growth and other grants that have been provided to us. There are also, on the following page, page 146 of your package, there are program enhancements that have been included in the budget over the original estimates. And they include safe school training, some school contingency increases, an increase in the recruitment budget, as well as an increase to the curriculum services and early years funding. And it's been offset by an increase in that particular allocation since the budget was announced. Those make up the recurring items, the year-over-year items. And then the following two items are one-time. There has been added an additional budget for the transition of the two consolidations for the year. So, we estimate about 125,000. And since we did not have all the information and the approvals at the time of the budget, we are incorporating it as a one-time increase in this budget. It will be offset by future cost reductions once the consolidations occur. The payroll module implementation cost was 32,000. It's an addition in costs. Our current provider has announced their retirement, and we are looking for a replacement system. So, it is a cost that we have not anticipated that we will be incurring. Again, the implementation will be a one-time cost. Also, within this budget is reflected the management hours of work increase proposal as a new initiative. So, it's already been captured in the numbers before the trustees today. So, if we look back at the expenses, we have about 4.4 million more in salary and benefits. About 2.25 is listed within the new positions. An additional $1 million was added to supply costs and sick leave contingency to match the trends from the year end. And about 900,000 are the increase in benefits. And the increase of 1.3, 1.4 million in other expenses are to address other provincial grants that have been announced since the budget. Code funding, some of it for technology, as we see very well, there is some need within our system. And some other deferred expenses from last year for which we had rolled over some funds. So, they do have an offsetting revenue, as well as an increase in contractual services. In summary, on page 144 of your package, so the first table in the report, outlines the budget and revised budget financial position. You'll see the total revenues have increased from 406.3 million to 415.1 and expenses have increased by 393.7 to 399.4 million. So, in terms of our financial position, we have, we project an operating surplus in year of 65,000. The operating reserve transfer remains at 740,000 as per the approved budget. $2 million transferred into the capital reserve. You'll notice there's other board reserves for 433,000. It shows as a negative for what this amount is at year end. We had rolled forward budgets for expenses that have been planned in last year, but they don't occur until this year. So, the budget comes with it, and this is where we draw now down the money. So, it's, it shows as a negative, but the opening balance had that money rolled over, which was not considered at the budget. So, there's an offset revenue for those expenses that were delayed into the following year. And the items unavailable for compliance are the 3.5 million increase in the revenue for land that we've talked about, just to match the revenue that we have collected last year. So, overall, the financial position is, if we look, it's similar to the budget, even though we have increased both revenues and expenses and added the program enhancements and the new initiative that has been listed in the budget. And we are going to finalize, just going through everything one more time and complete the enveloping provisions and bring trustees a final revised budget at the next board meeting. Myself, Erin, and Jay would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You got through that very well. Any questions, Roxana? For the gentleman. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Just on the additional attendance support officer. Is that required due to the increase in staffing? Is that sort of goes hand in hand with increased staff? And what is the HR transition supplement? Please.
Absolutely. The, so I'll start first with the funding. The HR transition supplement was announced in June last year. So, it was a bit late for our budget to determine what the requirements were for that additional funding. We were awarded 153,000 to deal with terms that were negotiated within the labor agreements. One of them is a new sick leave plan. And we see the need for an attendance support officer in order to better support a system and better help transition our staff back to work. I do believe this is a gap that we currently have in our organization. And by adding one more attendance officer, which now is actually funded with benefit in supporting staff within our current process.
That's good news. Thank you. And was this position requested in our previous budget but denied? Because I know there was budget requests that were denied at this table. So, this isn't part of that.
No. None of the new initiatives from the proposed at the budget time have been included or listed here. So, no, it has not. On, early in June, we received a memorandum with what additional funding was being provided to boards. So, it had not been even included in our grants at the time. It hadn't been explained to us in terms of what boards were given funding for. So, in, at the time, we had put 50,000 through the budget for, as a program enhancement. So, it's in the budget, 50,000 for additional staffing time required or system changes to deal with changes in, within labor negotiations. So, there's still 103,000 of that that were not allocated, but the funding is now in our revised estimates. So, no, it was not included at the time. And we were planning to bring it actually in the 18, 19 years. So, that was, that's one of the items that we planned to bring forward. But now with this funding, we saw the opportunity that it is, it's a funded position.
Thank you, then, through you to Trustee Superintendent O'Hara, then. So, there was a request in your budget proposal for a, another salary position that was, that may still fit in this envelope. Is that a possibility?
So, if we're going back to last budget year, we had a request in for a job evaluation officer. So, that request, we're deferring until the next budget cycle. The requests that are before you today are a result of legislative changes and also increase in sick leave and just the amount of volume of work that all of that is creating. So, they are existing initiatives, not a new initiative.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. So, thank you very much, Superintendent Nagoy and the staff at the business office. Excellent. Ten point five, intermediate core French resource purchase. Superintendent Picasin.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The purpose of the report is to recommend the purchase of an intermediate core French resource, Mon Réseau Ma Vie, to be used in grade eight FSL classrooms. The decision to purchase the program didn't require a textbook selection committee since it is a continuation of the existing anchor resource currently used in grade seven core French classes, originally purchased for use in the 2016, 17 school year. Teacher and student resources are flexible since they come in print and digital formats. And each school would receive a professional bundle, which includes a teacher digital e-guide school access that is a five-year school access to teacher e-guide for three users in the school, as well as various other activities, teaching guides, et cetera, in print. So, the recommendation is to purchase the Mon Réseau Ma Vie as the approved grade eight core French resource to ensure continuity of programming, effective implementation of the revised document, and seamless support of our Catholic graduate expectations.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Picasin? No? And that will come to the board for action next meeting. Okay? All right. Good. Thank you very much. Moving on to information items. Eleven point one, student trustee update. Trustee Christina.
Good evening, everyone. So, under the trustee update, the Ontario Student Trustees Association, OSTA-ECO, has just released the Ontario Student Parent and Educator Survey today. This report is comprised of quantitative and qualitative data that address the issues on the effectiveness of financial literacy in education, mental health supports, and the student voice from all across the province. Some of the key findings in the survey outlines that students feel that they do not have a sufficient voice that is effective in the education system of Ontario as a whole. The student trustees of the association this year are looking to make the voices of students heard through various initiatives and consultations that we plan to put into place. I encourage each of you to please see the full report and the key findings at osta-eco.org. And you can see, so this report is about forty-six pages. And the executive team of OSTA-ECO has worked really hard on comprising it. And we just want to bring awareness, especially with the election year being so soon. We just want to bring awareness to student issues and how students feel about making a difference in their education system and within their school communities as well. Furthermore, the Halton Catholic District School Board Senate will be having their meeting next week, December 12th, at Corpus Christi Secondary School, to discuss the upcoming initiatives for the year, both at the school level and within their individual school communities. Under the pillar of belonging, Christ the King had a former STOMP member come in today to do an interactive presentation with senior mentors who helped mentor grade nine and 10 students within their school community. And this was a way for them to get engaged and active, and it's a further encouragement for their leadership. Holy Trinity has had their international, will be having their international dinner next week, which promotes diversity within their school community. And there are many fundraisers for the Lenten season that have begun. Assumption is doing Adopt a Family. And both secondary and elementary schools are doing Angel Trees, Tunis for Tots, and Operation Christmas Child. I'll pass it to Ingrid now. I'll pass it to Ingrid now.
Thank you. So under the pillar of achieving, Assumptions Model UN team is hosting a Assumption Model UN conference for the grade seven and grade eight students from the feeder schools as a way to introduce them to the whole Model UN process and kind of get them used to being at Assumptions, which is something that we like to do. And our play is currently going on right now, December 6th, 7th, and 8th. It's Wizard of Oz and tickets are $10 to sing. And one of our grade 12 students, Andrew, who's a really good friend, placed fifth at G.HAC for swimming at, in the open relay. Qualified for ALSA and then placed gold at the McMaster meet this year for relay. At Notre Dame, five students on the cross-country team placed for the HCAA championships. Two students received G.HAC championships and won Luciani Cup. And the girls' field hockey team are HCAA champions. At Holy Trinity, a student won the Knights of Columbus Substance Abuse poster contests. And I believe today they came to the school to present the award to her. And the Tronic Titans robotics team had their first Lego League robotics competition. At STA, the STA senior girls volleyball team, the junior girls volleyball team, takes bronze in their first tournament of the season. And Jean Vanier, the DECA team competed in a provincial competitions. And 33 members of the team qualified to move forward to provincials in Toronto in February. And the students at the Bishop, in the Bishop Art, Bishop Reading Youth Arts Program were invited to display their arts creation in the legislative buildings from December through March, showcasing their creativity and diverse artistic abilities. So I'll pass it on to Anna Maria.
And finally, under the pillar of believing, many schools are attending the 34th Annual Oakville Prayer Breakfast tomorrow morning at the Oakville Conference Center, led by their chaplains. The Keep Christ in Christmas Knights of Columbus submissions are beginning to arrive. And I was informed there are already over 300 submissions received by the board office. And schools are getting into the Advent season, not only through the decoration and the putting up of trees, but also through beginning their Advent Masses this weekend into the next, either attending Mass with their home schools or welcoming priests into their schools. That's all for tonight.
Thank you very much to our student trustees. Excellent report as always. Any questions for the ladies? Trustee Row.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to trustee Ingrid. I think you said it was Assumptions does the Model UN introduction to the intermediates. Are you aware of other high schools that do that as well?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. Although I do know it's, it's a very, it's a popular program. Our school alone in the last two years has taken it from, you know, just competing at one, or attending one conference in Toronto to going even to Yale to, to be part of the conference there. So it's, it's expanding really fast. It's actually, I'm pretty sure it's our biggest team that we have at Assumptions, is our Model UN team. So even bigger than the football team. So, I'm just saying. So I'm not sure. I can look into the other high schools that do offer this program as well or this extracurricular activity. But I do not know off the top of my head.
Thank you very much. And thank you to our student trustees. Excellent as always. 11.2, school educational field trips. Superintendent Cipriano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you the five approved school educational field trips. Three of the trips are, will be taking place in the spring. And you'll note that two of the trips have already taken place in November. They were in response to two of our secondary schools qualifying for provincial championships and their attendance at those championships. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the field trips? None at all? Okay, thank you very much, Superintendent Cipriano. Back to Superintendent Nagoy for the 2016, 2017 Audit Committee and your report to the Board of Trustees for forwarding to the Ministry of Education. You always have the longest titles out of everyone. Go ahead.
It's a mandated title. I will, perhaps I'll start, but I'll pass it to the Chair of the Audit Committee, trustee Row as well to comment. Every year, we have an Audit Committee annual report to the Board of Trustees. And it is sent to the Ministry of Education, which outlines the work of the Audit Committee. It also outlines the audits that have been started and not completed, as well as the completed audits through the year. And trustee Row may have some additional comments. Thank you.
Trustee Row.
Nothing else really to add. It's, it sort of summarizes all the areas that the, that the Audit Committee's been involved in this year. So for public knowledge and to send to the ministry.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from trustees? No? All right, thank you. Moving on to 11.4, the International Student Program. I CEF Berlin Workshop, October 29th to November 1st, 2017. Superintendent Penelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure this evening to update the board on our active recruiting of international students. And part of that, if you recall, was my attendance in Berlin in October. It's interesting how things are quickly moving internationally in terms of student recruitment. And it is becoming a huge industry in terms of recruiting for all educational institutions. Canada, I'm very proud to say, having attended this conference, is still becoming now one of the top study destinations. And the appeal is across all educational sectors, from K to 12 at the secondary level and as well in post-secondary. The Berlin workshop is one of the biggest. I've got to say that three days of non-stop talking and marketing. By the end of the third day, I had no voice. But it was really a wonderful experience to interact and meet with top-notch professional companies that have been in existence for 30, 40 years in terms of marketing and recruiting students. As I said, the shift has happened globally. What used to be the US and the UK as top recruiters has now shifted to Canada because of our economy, because of our, the image globally that we offer. But most, more, most importantly is us. Us as a system, our location, and the quality of education that we offer our students. So it was, it was almost like a frenzy that, that individuals, as much as I had 45 booked meetings throughout those days, many would come up to the table and just say, can I, can I come in and just talk to you for a few minutes? Can you squeeze me in at 8 o'clock in the morning at 7:30? Because they wanted to get to know and get information regarding our system. So it was really a wonderful experience, as I said. And things are changing very rapidly globally in terms of, as you heard from Oksana, in terms of the numbers. I'm proud to share with the board that this year, we have in our secondaries, we have 214 international students. We have 13 elementary. So right now, we have 227 international students that obviously, as you heard earlier, are helping us in terms of balancing budget. We also have already lined up for semester two. We have an additional 16 students that will be joining us at the secondary level, as well as two elementary. So we're adding even as the year progresses. So again, it is, it was worthwhile for us to be present at the Berlin conference, even though it took forever to get there. The reality was that was beneficial for us. We've made a lot of great contacts and we've already signed contracts with agents. And we're looking forward to having some of those students start coming our way as international students. As we said, part of our strategy is to diversify our market and that this destination definitely gave us that opportunity to diversify. So again, it was a real pleasure and an honor to be representing Halton Catholic District School Board and our outstanding achievements. It was wonderful to be part of that. And I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Penelli. Any questions? Trustee Trites, thank trustee Caravella.
Through you, Madam Chair. Is this the first time that we've been represented at the Berlin conference?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
It was the very first time that we were there. And as I said, the competition, we didn't have any competition, which also helps us because it is a long way to go, 10, 11 hours to get there. I can see why many weren't shot away from it.
But it's well worth the extra travel to get there. It was our very first time.
Good on you. Trustee Caravella and trustee.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering how the homestay program is going to accommodate all these students? Or is, is that going well to find them a place to stay?
That's a whole other area for us that we are exploring and working towards. Guardianship and homestay is another initiative that we are researching and we continue to work. Right now, we, we are in fact getting students into homestays, but we continue to investigate that.
Thank you. Trustee Row.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, through you to the treasurer. I just see the list of possible places. And I'm just wondering if the student fees would cover ESL instruction, if that was necessary?
The fees for international students are set at 13,500, which pretty much includes the 3,000 and change component for ESL. When we get funding for outside of ESL, it's typically around the 9, 10,000 per, per our own pupils from the GSN. And we, we get additional funding for about $3,400 per eligible ESL student. So the way we structure the international student fees is to incorporate that because they would be eligible for English support. So yes, it is.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on trustee Trites's question. We'd never been to Europe before when it came to international. We've been to Mexico, Miami brought up, some South American, and Camilo's been to Brazil. So we've done that route. We thought it'd be a good idea to go to Europe too. And there are Catholic countries, you know, people very interested in coming to Halton Catholic.
Thank you very much to Superintendent Penelli. I'm sure it was a grueling trip, but well worth it. Thank you, an hour and a half. We appreciate it. Next item, we have miscellaneous information. We have minutes there, the minutes of the Audit Committee, the Policy Committee, and SEAC. If there are any questions to those three committees? Okay, we have correspondence. 13.1 is the 2018 OCSTA AGM and conference resolutions. We'll have to work on that in the new year so that we're ready to send that in by the end of September, end of January. Ali, did you want to say anything to that?
Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the last meeting because I'd been fighting something the last week or so. So I missed the last meeting, but I sent out the highlights. But I know certainly, I mean, they're looking for something provincial. The last letter that I alluded to in my email to everyone today, certainly, they've already sent their letter out to the ministry, which will hit on behalf of all the boards. So it'll already hit some of the major items that we have concern about. But certainly, if you collectively want to bring something forward that would benefit all Catholic boards, that's something that we can look at doing come the new year.
Through you, Madam Chair. And also, if trustees are wanting to put in a resolution for the AGM, they, they have a specific template. So you want to look at that. And if anybody has an idea to bring forward, we could use that and then finalize resolutions by the first meeting in January, or the only meeting in January. Because then we'd have to send it in by the end.
It's very clearly delineated and it's a very helpful template. So we have that. And then 13.2, we have a letter. Fun question period. I don't think we have anything. Nobody wants to talk to us. All right. So now we'll have to move back into in-camera.